Folks in the hallway, if you want to come in and grab chairs, you can. Plenty of seating in the corner here. Just come in, grab chairs if you want to come in. Good evening, folks. Just a few logistics before we get started. If you're here tonight to speak for anything, make sure you go to the lectern, say your name and address. Please do not talk back and forth to each other so everyone can understand what's going on. This is the City of Lowell's only Board of Appeals Public Hearing for March 24th, 2025. If you have any electronics device, if you could just turn it off or put it on vibrate, that'd be appreciated. And then you could join the meeting remotely as well and in person through Zoom and by calling in with DPD. We'll just go into the agenda. Under Continued Business, we have ZBA-2025-6. The petition is a variant. The applicant is Kim Sang Sang, property located at 180 Liberty Street. The Lowell's only Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing until interested persons relative to an application, by Kim Sang Sang, to add a takeout restaurant to the existing convenience store. The subject property is located in the traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district. The project requires variance approval per Section 6.1 for relief from the minimum parking requirements and for any delivery required in the Lowell's ordinance. Anyone here for Liberty Street? Oh, yeah. Is the applicant here for Liberty Street? Oh, yeah. You want to just come to the lectern? Good evening, folks. Yeah, you want to just state your name and address for the record?
Yep, my name is Jessica Kennett, and it's 180 Liberty Street in Lowell. And this is my uncle, Kim Sang Sang, and it's for 180 Liberty Street as well.
Okay. You want to just tell us about the project?
Yes, so the project is basically a takeout restaurant, and so there'll be no seating at all. It's just that he's been struggling to... The business has been going down for the convenience store as well, so he wanted to add that to maybe boost some business in that area.
Okay. Okay. Anything else you want to add before we move it open to the public?
Yeah, there'll be just no seating at all.
Okay.
Yeah, we just want to be very specific that there's no seating.
Yeah, just takeout, yeah.
Yeah, just takeout.
Okay. All right, so now we're going to open the hearing to the public.
Yes.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition's petition? Yeah, you want to just come up to the lectern, ma'am? Good evening.
Deborah Felton.
I'm Bradley Felton.
And we live at 183 Liberty Street, which is directly across from the store-proposed takeout restaurant. So I wrote some things down.
Sure, yeah.
Just going to read it. "We live at 183 Liberty Street, directly across from where the proposed takeout restaurant would be located. Liberty Street is a very busy street with a four-way stop at School Street. Liberty Street is too busy for this kind of business. It is congested with multifamily homes with no off-street parking, a barber shop also located on a corner with no parking. A bus stop is also at the corner of Liberty and Grace. There are just too many cars in the area, and putting a takeout shop would only add to the problem. We can hardly find street parking now, and if the takeout restaurant were there, residents would lose more spaces. We've lived there for over 40 years. It's always been a problem for us trying to enter or exit our driveway. People stop in front of our driveway even when there is space on either side because they want to go to the store for just a minute. I've been trying to exit my driveway when people will stop, when they can clearly see I am trying to leave and tell me they'll be right out. It's been a problem for a long, long time. Trash is also a problem. People just drop trash from the items they purchased in the store, soda bottles, food wrappers, that they're eating, and it blows into my yard and on my sidewalk in front. The store owner has a barrel that he's... It's not there right now, but he has had a barrel in front, but people just litter and walk away. A takeout food store can only make things worse. People that don't live on Liberty Street are now parking their work trucks because there's no room to park on Grace Street, the corner where the takeout restaurant would be located. Grace Street has cars parked on both sides, which makes it extremely difficult to drive down when customers are trying to stop and pick up their takeout and will be just a minute. The problem can only get worse."
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition's petition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing that a portion of the public hearing is closed, anyone wishing to speak in favor's petition? Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Realize the neighbors across the street express traffic issues and all that. I recognize that, but for this gentleman here, the convenience store been there for years, and he is an absolutely good neighbor, good citizen and community person who have seen COVID, the business. I frequent that business, that street, Liberty Street. I also frequent the businesses as well. The business is almost dying, close to dying. You go in there, you see it, it's dying without substitute income. They're going to force to close the business and looking at what else to do. I think the takeout, basically, people will come, given the fact that the restaurant not too far away from there closed down now, like the Hang Li Restaurant just across from the liquor store. That's going to... People's going to want takeout, you know, call in, come and pick it up, and there you go. And just like the petitioner said, they're not going to have table, chair, nothing. Just call, take out, and go, given the fact that the convenience is not working that well. Hope that this will be a supplement income that they need to survive. So as far as other issues that the chairman and member of the board has in terms of, you know, bucket out front to people to drop off, you know, trash and whatnot. You know, people, sometimes even the trash bucket there, people just ignore that, just walk away and throw it and stuff. So it's not on the owners here. But he will be whatever the chairman and the member of the board see fit in helping this supplement income to these families. He will accommodate any conditions that the chairman and member of the board have put on him. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor's petition? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing that the public hearing is closed, we're going to open and question the comments to the board. The chair organizes, Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that we definitely need more information about this project in itself in order for us to determine, you know, how we would proceed because the dimensions that was given doesn't... I don't think it's sufficient. There is no specification on the parking, and I believe it's... According to DPD, there is two spaces in the area, but this dimension here does not show anything about the parking. So I think you may have to go back to the joint board on this and so that we can make an informed decision. That's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair organizes, Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is to Dylan with our DPD staff. Referring to the comments, number five indicates that the requested relief is minimal, and I believe it to be so. But the city has not received... Hasn't received any parking issues in the area? Hasn't received any complaints or violations? That comment is attributed to your staff?
Yeah, I was not the one who reviewed that. That was a different staff member, but I'm not aware of any.
All right. Comment four indicates that there are two parking spaces. Are you saying that there are two parking spaces dedicated to the business? Does it exist today?
No, I think that is just referring to there are two parking spaces on the property. I'm not sure whether those are used for the business.
All right, so where the requirement is one space for every 300 square feet? The building is approximately... The space is approximately what, 760 square feet? Is that true?
Yep.
So again, we're talking the two spaces, roughly?
For zoning purposes, you'd be looking for relief from three spaces. So the use would require three spaces.
All right. But the condition exists with the business as it's structured today?
Yes.
The lack of parking? So we're not... Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair organizes, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask a question of the applicant if I could. The current store is a convenience store. Is that going to change when it's a takeout? Are you still going to have a convenience store element to this facility? Are you still going to sell material, food items, that kind of thing while it's a takeout?
Yes, he still is going to be keeping a small section of the convenience store just for Keno and the lottery in that area.
Okay, okay, so it's mainly going to be takeout and then Keno and lottery, kind of?
Yes.
Okay. And so my guess is that in the past, when it was before COVID, you probably had 100 customers a day? Is that... What would you have guessed your customer?
About 60, 60, 70, 100.
Yes, he would say 70 to 100 a day.
70, right, and now it's dropped off quite a bit?
It's dropped off quite a bit.
Right. So going back to a takeout, you'd probably be getting back closer to that number. But would the takeout be primarily certain hours? What would the hours of the takeout piece be?
Okay, from eight to six?
Oh, it would, okay, so it'd be basically the same hours as the convenience store was?
Yes, so we're not trying to keep it like a late-out, late-night takeout at all.
Great, okay. And then you seem to have two on-street parking at the property at Liberty Street, and then at... I don't know the name of the side street here. Is it Grace Street? I guess it's Grace. There seems to be maybe three or four on-street parking spaces on that street?
Yes.
So where would your employees park? You must have one or two employees?
Yeah, most of the... I have at the back, between Grace Street by four or five of them on the side. Maybe you can park 10.
But you're parking on the property then, so you're not parking on the street for the employees?
I got two of them in the back.
In the back, right. So you would have, in theory, five spaces adjacent to your property. I don't know. I kind of think that this makes sense. I'm not afraid of looking in favor of this. I understand you've got a lovely property across the street at 183. It looks beautiful, nice off-street parking. I understand the scenario here, but it seems as though it's no worse than what it was before COVID with the takeout. And if the staff doesn't have any complaints of parking in the neighborhood, it seems as though we've got reason to believe that this would be a successful venture, so... I think I'll listen to my fellow board members here, but I think that you can't do anything for off-street parking on this site. So you're relying on on-street parking in this neighborhood, and you want to try to keep your business surviving, and you're offering this as a solution. So I understand. We should be supporting any businesses to survive in this climate, so... Anyway, I'll listen to my fellow board members, but I'm looking favorable upon this right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask the same, pretty much the same question as Dennis did to try to get the information on whether the convenience store is staying or not, and I thank the applicant for clarifying that. I understand the concerns about the parking. It's really congested over there. Actually, back to the applicant real quick, and just a couple of quick questions, so, sorry. I'm just curious, how long has the... How long have the convenience store been in business there?
23 years.
23 years, okay. And, you know, same, like pre-COVID, you're averaging about 60 or so customers?
Yes.
That pre-COVID, like what about now after, like, say, the last 24 months or so?
Oh, that now is kind of 10 to 20 people.
10 to 20?
Yeah, 10 to 20.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, we got comments from DPD that the application doesn't really have a lot of information regarding the parking, but understanding the area, it's... It seems pretty clear you don't have any parking available over there on the street and on your lot, so...
Yeah, it's all near multi, you know, the mixed-use area, right, so...
Yes.
Yeah.
And getting back to the, you know, parking spaces for the employers, I mean, I'm presuming... So you're going to have the convenience store, you have a separate... So how is it working as far... How are you planning on working as far as the takeout is concerned? Are payments going to be made? Are they going to be... Are you going to be separating, like, the monies from the takeout portion and the convenience store? Is it all going to be one? So if I go in and purchase food from the takeout area, am I paying at the cashier or am I paying at the takeout area? Is it a different... Are there going to be different...
It'll be a different checkout.
Okay, so...
Yes.
So at least... So at least two employees for cashier and handling money. I presume another one or two employees for making the food?
Yeah.
Right? What kind of food are we... Are you proposing to do?
Yeah, it'll be Southeast Asian, Cambodian.
Cambodian?
Mostly Thai.
Yep, Thai, okay. So you're looking at any given time, four to five employees? And presume somebody's going to manage the place too as well, right? Yourself, be there to manage it?
Which he's...
Yeah?
Yeah, he'll probably... Yeah, he'll be managing it.
Okay, all right. Now, that was one thing I was kind of curious of. I'm also kind of curious about the layout you got proposed, which again is getting me back to whether or not I think we might need additional information because you've got the main entrance, you've got the cashier on the side. I presume that's where the layout is right now, right? I'm looking at the floor plan that you provided.
Where's the door? This way? Oh, on the side, right? Okay.
Okay, do you have it in front of you? You have that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I see you got the main entrance, the cashier on the side, and then you got the kitchen space in the back. There's a door back there, but then on the other side, you got bathroom, something listed as bathroom, but no, nothing that shows it's a bathroom. It just looks like a door to the stairs, so I'm just kind of...
Yes, I know, I was kind of wondering. It looked like a door to me, too, and I said, maybe that needs to be up to... Yeah, but...
Okay.
Yeah, he's hoping to keep that as a bathroom next to the kitchen there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll listen to my other fellow board members. I really want to... I think this is workable. I really do. Especially when you say the takeout hours are 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay. So no late night? I'm going to guess maybe the possibility of Uber Eats and Lyft, but it doesn't seem like that's going to be... Most people will be getting that type of food, appearing and picking up that type of food, probably at the evening portion. So I think that, in my opinion, I think that works in your favor a little bit, but I'm leaning towards supporting this, but I do have some concerns about whether or not we have enough information to go forward. I'll listen to my other fellow board members and see what they say, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Chair organizes, Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I have... Yeah, I do. Thank you.
If you want to just stay there, I think it'd be easier.
Yeah, 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 we'll just stay here. That's fine.
I'll try to make it quick. How do you envision the majority of the ordering of the food to go? In person or via the phone?
I think it's a... Yeah, I think it's a combination of both. I think it's going to be phone call or walking in.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I know you can't get too specific, but what's the average turnaround time from order to food being done and out the door?
I would say at most probably 10 minutes.
Okay. The reason I ask that is if parking's an issue, how fast do we get in cars in and out? So if we're looking at 10 minutes, that's probably a little bit longer than a normal time in a convenience store.
Yeah, we're estimating like at most. It is going to be a takeout, so we're hoping that every... Like, most of the food will be already prepped and warmed already. It's going to be... We're kind of overestimated, but we're hoping more like five.
Sure, okay, so it's pretty much made to order, packaged to order?
Yes.
You're going to already have the majority of it prepped and cooked?
Yes.
Okay. Are you doing a breakfast portion of it?
No, no, it won't be like a breakfast. So I feel like, you know, traditionally, there's no difference between breakfast or lunch or dinner. It's just one, you know, whatever might be served on the menu for the day or for the week, and that would be what it is for morning lunch and dinner.
Right, okay. And the reason I ask is I think the neighbors have some valid concerns, especially with that being a school bus stop, right? So if we're having high traffic in the morning when kids are in school, you know, lunchtime is, depending on what school, I don't know what... Well, there's no neighborhood schools, but... So kids could be dropped off anywhere from 2:30 to 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock. I think the neighbors have a valid concern. However, I think the concern lies with the general bad manners of people. And I'm not saying it's from your store or anything.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I'm just, it's unfortunate. I don't know how I would react if somebody parked behind me when I was trying to back out.
Yeah.
I'm sure you reacted a lot better than I would. Parking in the area, I get it. I used to go to Chuck's as a kid, so I'm familiar with the area. And it's tight at times. I think it alleviates, you know, depending on when people are at work or whatever, so... If traffic's down via the store, I don't think adding this small takeout is going to put such a strain, seeing that parking is not a permanent thing. They're going to park and hopefully leave as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's tough. I get the neighbors' concerns. I do. I sympathize with them. You know, I would just ask maybe if you could go out and clean up in front of the store, make sure it's tidy. But I get, you know, it's been windy the last couple of days, so really, it could be from down the street or wherever, so it's tough. And it's not all on you, and it's not all your responsibility. But I don't think we're asking for much. Realistically, the only thing we're asking here is a variance to two parking spots. And if the success of your business or the non-success of your business relies on that, I have a hard time saying, no, we can't let people park for 10 minutes and then drive off. It's tough. But I would be in support of this. I know some other members need more information. Realistically, the only thing we're looking at is the two parking spots, in my view. So I don't have a problem with approving the two parking spots, so... I'll listen to everybody else, but that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Havi. The chair organizes, Mr. Nicholson. Mr. Nicholson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a lot of the questions I had are already answered and asked by my colleagues and stuff like that. But one question I do have... Well, I have a couple still, but what type of... What are you selling now at the convenience store?
So what we're selling now is just kind of like your quick snacks for the kids, you know, juices, sodas, chips, and candy. And like your traditional, you know, milk and cheese, but we just haven't gotten much traffic at all since COVID. And so it's taking a longer time to move the products out. Things are just staying in the store a lot longer, and he's just having to trash all of it because they're expired.
That's unfortunate, yeah.
Yeah.
So now, are you going to be working with like a DoorDash and Uber Eats and Grubhub and stuff like that? Are you going to be partnering up with them, or is this just going to be like word of mouth?
So as of right now, no, I think that we want to see how this goes first, just by phone call or coming in for takeout, ordering, and I don't think that we're ready for that. Yeah, he wants to know that this is going to be a success first, when, you know, just within the community. And yeah, first, before he's expanding anything more.
Yeah, I mean, like, I was looking, interested in the hours, what type of food you're doing, understand the parking situation. I mean, I see these type of convenience stores with restaurants in them all over the island in Aruba. I mean, I'm down, I have a place down there, so I go down there frequently, and I go to those places, you know? That's where like you get the best food, to be honest, at least at the off-resort and stuff. But so, I mean, I understand. I mean, I don't really have any more questions. They were already answered. Those were just the ones I was asking about, but I don't see there as being a big issue. I understand the parking situation, but it is a multi-area. You know, it's just... If you had high traffic prior to COVID and it's died down, bringing this new business in is just going to bring back the same type of traffic that was there prior. That was just... So I don't really see that really being any major difference, but... So, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. I do think that this is a nice business. I've been there myself. And, you know, I understand why you're here. You want to add a little more revenue stream. It makes sense, I think. To me, the kind of business you're adding on, it's less intrusive, especially, you know, struggling to keep the business going. I think to me, Mr. Vice Chairman and my colleagues, you know, they don't do well, and then they close down. Then one comes up next, another business. and then they close down, then one comes up next, another business, a smoke shop or, or whatever, you know what I mean? So I, I think, I think in the long run, I think, hopefully, this, this new revenue stream will, will work out and be beneficial to you. Um, and to me, I think, you know, uh, the parking situation, it, it can be maintained and managed, and Mr. Singh seems like a very, um, professional guy, so I think, um, you know, I, I do hear the concern of the neighbors, um, but, um, and this is what we want to do, we want to support small businesses, so, um, I'll be supporting, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments by my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion? Maybe place a condition on this, uh, for a six-month administrative review, um, to see how the traffic and, and, uh, parking is, uh, being affected. I guess, when, um, well, when do you, if, if approved, when do you plan on starting, like, setting up the takeout, uh, business?
So probably three to four months.
Okay. So I guess, I mean, doing six months now isn't probably gonna make much of a difference, so like, say, could we do six-month administrative review from opening of takeout, but how are we gonna find, how are we gonna know that? And Dylan, any suggestions, or?
They'll, they'll have to file a permit, so when the permit is, uh...
Okay.
Completed by the building...
With the building permit?
So issuance of the, so six-month administrative review from the issuance of the building permit?
Sure.
Yeah, we can do that. Mr. McCarthy, did you have a comment, sir?
I, I just wanted to clarify, our six-month administrative reviews always follow the building permit, occupancy permit, actually, not the building permit, the occupancy permit.
Okay. All right. Ma'am, sir, are you okay with that condition?
Yes.
With the administrative review?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other comments from our colleagues? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB A 2025-6 for variance at 180 Liberty Street, uh, variance, um, approval for section 6.1 for relief from minimum parking requirements.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by the Vice Chairman, um, can you have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve the condition.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Conditions.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
All right, you've been approved, wish you the best of luck, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, under new business. We have ZB A dash 2025 dash seven, the petition is a variance, applicant is Devois Sign Company, probably located at 1201 Bridge Street. The laws on board appeals will hold a public hearing to all interested persons relative to an application by Devois Sign Company to rec signage at 1201 Bridge Street. The subject property is located in the regional retail RR zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval for section 6.3 for relief from the maximum size of the wall sign requirements and any other relief required in the laws or ordinance. We did good communication, um, just need some more information, public notice information to be put out to the public, so this will be continued to our next available ZB A hearing April 14th. All right, can we have a motion to continue the matter, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB A 2025 dash seven for variance at 1201 Bridge Street to be continued to April 14th.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy to continue the matter.
Second.
Second by Mr. Proko, um, can you have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve continuance.
Uh, Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance to April 14th, 2025.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to April 20, April 14th, 2025.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve continuance for April 14th, 2025.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
All right, the matter's been continued, just for the public record, this is the public notice, um, there'll be no other notices pertaining to this matter. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have ZB A dash 2025 dash eight. The petition is a special permit, applicant is Care Self Mojo Bodywork Spa Inc., property located at 101 to 107 Central Street. The applicant zoning bylaw is Article 12.4. The petition is the laws on board appeals will hold a public hearing to all interested persons relative to an application by Care Self Mojo Bodywork Spa Inc. to open a day spa business at 101 to 107 Central Street. The subject property Downtown Mixed Use DMU Zoning District. The proposal requires special permit approval for section 12.4 to operate massage therapy establishment and any other relief required in the laws or ordinance. Oh, good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant Care Self Mojo Bodywork Spa Inc. With us tonight, we have Ms. Lowe, Ms. Lowe is the business owner, and we have her interpreter, Joe Zah. The other partner, Mr. Zhang is not available tonight, um, but as the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight seeking a special permit pursuant to sections 9.3 and sections 12.8 C of the city zoning ordinance. The subject property is located at 101 dash 107 Central Street in the downtown mixed use and the downtown overlay districts. Uh, the property is located, it's a street-level commercial unit located in a mixed-use building. The other street-level commercial unit is a nail salon, and the upper floors are residential. Uh, the applicant sold a spa business a few years back during the COVID era and has been looking for an opportunity to get back into the business ever since. Uh, she has focused her sights on Lowell, considering Lowell's, uh, very diverse, vibrant, and ever-growing downtown residential population. Relative to the criteria identified in section 9.3 of the zoning ordinance, I would suggest that two of the criteria are more relevant than, than the others, and I'll just run through those for a minute. Uh, so the first is how does the application adhere to apply and promote the goals of the City of Lowell Lowell Forward Plan? I would suggest that the opening of, of the spa at 101 Central Street creates yet another, uh, broad range of commercial businesses within the downtown. Uh, it also serves to activate a vacant street front or a street-level suite, and I would also suggest that by, um, the, the applicant will have the opportunity to grow the business with that ever-increasing downtown residential population. The second is how does the application protect, enhance, protect and enhance the character of the downtown neighborhood? So, considering the guy, the spa again is a street-level commercial suite, uh, the spa is going to be designed where it's a professional layout, uh, as you're looking into the business, um, which will, which will complement the surrounding buildings and area. Once the spa opens for business, this building will be a very active, will have a very active first-floor presence. So I believe that those two criteria are the most relevant in section 9.1 where the criteria is laid out. Uh, in terms of signage for the business, the applicant under, has not yet designed a sign, but the applicant understands that any signage will need to be approved by the Historic Board's Administrator, Steve Stoll. In terms of, uh, employees and hours of operation, the spa intends to operate on a, um, appointment basis only, but they do intend to operate seven days a week, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., again, you know, upon appointment basis only. We anticipate there'll be about three employees in the business. In terms of parking, as my, my narrative notes and the staff comments note, there is no parking requirements downtown because of the, uh, abundance of municipal parking in terms of parking garages and on-street parking. The staff comments and the staff and the project management team within those comments point out, pointed out a concern in the initial floor plan that we provided. So that initial floor plan showed one of the treatment rooms right up against the, uh, street-level window, and that was a concern to, uh, both the staff and the project management team because it, it, it really didn't, uh, it wasn't complimentary to the downtown. So I, I received the comments, I got on the phone with my client, we discussed why it was a concern and that it's a legitimate concern. My client recognized that, and we have since revised the floor plan. So you should have a floor plan now that shows a pretty significant lobby area, reception area, with three, uh, massage rooms as opposed to the initial plan that had four, uh, and then obviously the, um, the amenities in the back of the, of the, uh, building, of back of the suite. So we did provide these plans to the staff, and the staff seemed to be happy with the revisions to the plan. The economic development team within the comments encourages issuance of the special permit. Again, the Historic Board, Steve Stoll, notes that any signage, signage needs approval, and he also notes that the building owner intends to do some, um, some exterior repairs to the building when the weather turns, so that, that will obviously be a benefit to the downtown as well. The fire department notes that, uh, if there's any change to the existing fire, uh, protection system, permits will need to be pr- uh, pulled. We don't anticipate there will be any change, but we understand that permits will need to be pr- uh, pulled if there is. So again, with that, I believe that we've demonstrated that we meet the criteria associated with the issuance of the special permit, and we respectfully request issuance this evening. Happy to answer any questions or try to address any concerns. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Counselor. Um, now, we'll, they're hearing to the public, um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition is petition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor's petition? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing none, the public hearings closed. We're gonna open questions and comments to the board. Uh, the chair recognizes, um, Mr. Brier, Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the owners of the business, thank you for your investment in Lowell. I hope, uh, I hope this new venture is successful, and it appears from the comments expressed by our city department staff, they are rooting for your success also. My only questions were with respect to the floor plan, which has been revised, that I believe more than adequately, uh, addresses the safety and privacy concerns expressed. So I want to wish you the best of luck, and I'll be voting in favor, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. Now, the chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd like to ask Counsel if I could see the floor plan?
Yes, of course.
Maybe I can share it with my colleagues here. That's beautiful. Uh, that's exactly what I was hoping for.
Thank, thank you.
We'll have a street presence in the lobby, um, in, all the privacy will be provided for the massage rooms. Uh, this is great. Uh, and I, I want to echo my fellow board members, um, congratulations for, um, wanting to invest in the city. Um, and, uh, my, um, brother-in-law used to have his jewelry business here, and, uh, it was a great location for so many years, so I wish you all the best of luck here. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Uh, the chair recognizes, um, the Vice Chairman, Ms. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep, now that we got the new plans, I mean, now, uh, my concerns have been alleviated as well as staff, so, um, it's glad to see that, you know, revitalizing downtown with a, you know, hopefully very successful business, and, um, but it should fit in nicely, so, and I wish you the best of luck, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Callahan. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Havi, Ms. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thanks. Dylan, do you have these plans?
I do not have a copy of the plans, um...
Does DPD have these plans?
I need to confirm with Peter, running back in the office.
Right.
They do.
Okay, they have been updated, loaded, and sent to us, so that's why, um, they need to get onto the website and, uh, which is fine, um, but this is the first we're seeing of. That's the only questions I actually had, we're, we're on that, uh, first room, and it looks like, um, it's been dealt with, so.
Yep.
Uh, the best of luck.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson, Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I have the same questions, um, I didn't see these plans until just now, which, I'm glad you have them, um, for us to look at, so I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Nickerson. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko, Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we all had the same questions, because, uh, we are now seeing the updated, uh, plan, so, um, so I think any questions we had were, were based on, on this, so I appreciate the updated, uh, floor plan, and I think it's a good project, and congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Proko. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any concerns, um, thank you, Counselor, for the updated floor plans. Yeah, I think this would be a good addition to downtown, just like my colleague said, there's a lot of businesses vacant and moving out and just not thriving as they used to be, so welcome to the city of Lowell, so wish you the best of luck. Any other comments for more forward with the motion? Uh, Mr. McCarthy, yes, sir?
I, I'd just like to maybe make a condition that, um, you provide the updated floor plan to DPDs in, in the event that you haven't, or they haven't received it, that shows the three massage rooms only.
Can you okay that?
I perfectly accept them.
Okay, thank, thank you, Counselor, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Any other comments for more forward with the motion? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB A 2025 dash eight for special permit at 101 to 107 Central Street, uh, special permit approval per Article 12.4 to operate a massage therapy establishment, uh, with the condition that you provide, uh, DPD with an updated floor plan showing no more than three massage rooms.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by the Vice Chairman, um, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve the condition.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the condition.
Uh, Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve with conditions.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
All right, you've been approved, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have new business, uh, we have ZB A dash 2025 dash nine, thank you, have a good evening. Um, petition type is a variance, the applicant is Mark Poirier, property located at 326 Cumberland Road, um, the applicant zoning bylaw is section 5.1, um, the petition is the laws on board appeals will hold a public hearing to all interested persons relative to applicant, application by the applicant to construct a single-family home at 326 Cumberland Road. The subject property is located in the traditional, s- single-family TSF zoning district. Mr. Hammer, if you're setting up, sir, if you don't mind setting up in the middle of the council, that'd be great. The proposal requires variance approval for section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area and minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirements and for any relief required in the laws or ordinance. Uh, good evening again, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, for the record, my name is John Geary, Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Mark Poirier. Mark was, uh, traveling back to Lowell today, and he actually delayed in his plan, so he's not here, but his partner, Kevin McMinimum, is here with us tonight, and clearly we have Matt Hammer of Landplex with us tonight as well. As the chairman mentioned, this is an application, uh, requesting relief for, uh, pursuant to section 5.1 of the city zoning ordinance. Subject property is located at 326 Cumberland Road in the traditional single-family zoning district. The lot contains about 6,208 square feet of land, the applicant's proposing to build a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home with about 1,700 square feet of living space. The new home will also include a two-car garage under with the corresponding driveway, so there's more than sufficient off-street parking. Uh, in terms of the materials that we've provided in advance of tonight's hearing, we provided the complete, uh, application package, which includes among other things the, the site plan, the floor plans, the elevations, and we have also provided a colorized streetscape of how the, uh, the exact, the home will fit on the lot once constructed. We are specifically requesting relief tonight, uh, for minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, as well as minimum front yard setback to this, to the garage. Uh, the property is on a corner lot on the corner of Orleans and Cumberland, Orleans Street and Cumberland Street. Uh, there's about 100 feet, a little bit over 100 feet of frontage along Orleans and about 75 feet of frontage along Cumberland. The neighborhood is densely settled with a mix of single and multifamily properties. In terms of the relief being requested, uh, for minimum lot area or minimum lot area In terms of the relief being requested for minimum lot area or minimum lot area per dwelling unit, they go hand in hand, meaning that in the traditional single-family zoning district, if you don't have sufficient lot area, you're not going to have sufficient lot area per dwelling unit. As I mentioned, the lots, about 6,208 square feet. The traditional single-family zoning district requires a minimum of 7,000 square feet of land area, so we are short by 792 square feet for both land area and land area per dwelling unit. Dylan did a pretty thorough job of analyzing the various lot sizes within the neighborhood. His conclusion was that this lot, this subject property, is larger than most lots within the neighborhood. I've also included within my narrative an exhibit plan that shows more than 40 lots in the immediate neighborhood that are smaller than the subject property. In terms of the relief that we're requesting for the minimum front yard setback to the garage, code requires that we provide 24 feet from the street to the garage. We're showing 20 feet. Considering that the lot has frontage on two streets, it's a little bit unique in that you typically see your garage in the front of the house facing out to the street. This garage is to the side of the house facing out to Cumberland Street. And as I said, we're able, we have a two-car garage under and the driveway associated with that, so we're able to park at least four cars there, which is very important in a densely settled neighborhood. And we feel that the minimal relief is warranted in this situation for the setback to the garage. And for purposes of demonstrating that what we are proposing on this lot is appropriate both for the lot and for the neighborhood, we've provided that colorized streetscape, which shows the lot, it shows it how it fits, how it relates to the topography of the lot, and exactly how it will look on the lot once it's done. And Matt will go over that with the board in just a few minutes. In terms of the staff comments, the comments are favorable to the proposal and, as I indicate, do a thorough job of analyzing the relief in comparison to the neighborhood. The project management team's comments are also supportive of the project and they suggest that the design aligns with the character of the neighborhood, the design of the home. We've had an opportunity to review the engineering comments. We have no issue with any of those comments. The stormwater team notes that a recharge system is not necessary. Nonetheless, we are providing one and we're happy to work with the stormwater team on where that location ends up being on the lot. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Matt and he can go through the plans with the board.
Thank you, councillor. Good evening, Mr. Hammer.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Matt Hammer with Landplex Engineering and Surveying, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. So existing is a 6,208-square-foot lot with frontage along Cumberland Road and frontage along Orleans Road. It's a trapezoidal shape with the grades higher on this side of the property extending down to Cumberland Road. So with that grading configuration, we thought that a drive-under garage would be appropriate to work with the grades, so there's a minimal of lot disruption in order to get this house easily situated on the lot. A driveway is located here off of Cumberland Road. There's a two-car garage within the building itself, which is what we call a drive-under garage. You can, as Mr. Gary noted, you could provide additional parking in front of the garage, which could be in this, which would be in this location here. And then there's an entrance walkway to get yourself into the, what is the front door of the house, which faces Orleans. The house is 24 by 35 feet in dimension with a deck extending off of the rear and a front entrance way coming in off the front of the house with a walkway coming down to the garage. There's a significant amount of landscaping proposed. There's some arbivides that are located here for some additional screening. There's two shade trees located off of Orleans Street that's shown. There's also a proposed Japanese maple at the corner, as well as boxwood planting gardens along the walkway, which are also representative in the elevation. So we wanted to make sure the elevation matches up with the site plan. So this is the location of the building shown, looking at it from Orleans Street. Here's the dogwood. The proposed shade trees weren't incorporated in this elevation, but those would be located here. This tree is going to remain. And this is the front entrance way of the house off of Orleans. And with this, you can see the other actual residences with their scale and perspective off of, seen off of Orleans. Additionally, this is what the house will look like as you're standing on Cumberland Street. And you can see how the building fits in with, it's almost dwarfed by the building in the back. And that's how it will look coming in off of Cumberland. This is the walkway coming into that front entrance. These are the elevations. This is looking at it from Orleans. This is looking at the structure from Cumberland. And this is the side elevation. And this is the others, the right side elevation. This is the floor plan coming in off of the front entrance way, foyer, living room, breakfast area, kitchen, dining room, coming out on the deck on the side. Second floor is three bedrooms here with bath, two separate bathrooms. And then this is the garage with some storage area in the rear of the garage. And I can put it back to attorney Gary.
Thank you, Matt. So we believe that we meet the criteria for issuance of the requested relief. With regard to intent of zoning, pursuant to the ordinance, the traditional single-family zoning district was designed to preserve, promote, and enhance the character of these traditional neighborhoods while promoting single-family housing on moderately sized lots. We are proposing a single-family home of which the design fits the character of the neighborhood. The lot size is certainly in character with what exists in the neighborhood now, so I think we clearly satisfy the intent of zoning. With regard to whether or not relief can be granted without detriment to the public good, we are proposing to add another home, a single-family home, in an incredibly restricted or constricted, I should say, housing market. The home will consist of professionally landscaped browns with at least two or three shade trees and some other greenery, which is very, very important in a densely settled neighborhood. Once the construction is complete, the new home will add to the real estate tax revenue relative to this lot, and the addition of the new home complies with the Lowell Forward Housing Production Plan. So we, there's no question that relief can be granted without detriment to the public good. With regard to the applicant or the owner's hardship related to this property, I'd suggest that the topography of this lot, the fact that the owner has to upkeep and maintain this property and the property has been taxed separately as a separate lot for decades now, would create a hardship, financial hardship for this owner and any future owner of the property. So I believe that we meet the criteria for issuance of the requested relief and we respectfully request approval this evening. Again, we're here to answer any questions or try to address any concerns that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Now, we're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition's petition? Anyone just come up, sir? Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Greg Delp. I live at 318 Cumberland Road, which is the house right next to the lot. I'm just going to read you this petition that everybody in the neighborhood has signed. It says, "With the undersigned petition, the zoning board of appeals to deny the proposed application for the zoning variance of 326 Cumberland Road. We oppose the proposed zoning variance of the 326 Cumberland Road. The neighborhood is crowded with very limited street parking available. This parking is frequently filled on weekends and holidays. The winter time is very challenging for the residents due to the on-street parking. There are several homes on Orleans Street with no parking available or inadequate parking. We feel this home would add to the situation by eliminating street parking at the driveway and in front of the house. This home could be also, this home could also add to the street parking needs of many other houses that have more than two cars. The parking situation has caused safety concerns in our neighborhood and making it difficult to turn in or out of Cumberland Road. There's a hill there if you're trying to take a left on Orleans. People come flying over that hill you can't see and the cars parked there, you have to pull out in order to see. It's been like that forever. Last time they tried to do this, we had the same complaint, they put in a couple of no parking signs from here to corner. It didn't make any difference. We oppose the variance due to the neighborhood already being crowded in this lot, not meeting the zoning requirements for the minimum lot size. Zoning changes have brought some relief to this neighborhood where prior to this home, these changes, homes were squeezed on every available sliver of land and the front of homes were allowed to be turned in the parking spaces, making less open in green areas. The owner of this property is asking for variance solely for the purpose of making a profit. Unlike the residents of this neighborhood who have lived here for several decades, they do not live in this neighborhood and will not be impacted by the changes brought this project would have in the community." Now, those pictures of this land, that hill is a lot steeper than what those pictures show. And it also shows that house further away from my house in that picture. It's going to be 20 feet, which is from me to you. And the back of the house is probably going to be as tall as this ceiling. That's what I'm going to be looking at. When we bought the house 36 years ago, part of the reason we bought it was because there was no house there. And I have talked to the owner of that property years ago. We were out cutting the lawn one Saturday. He told me his parents bought that land because they did not want a house there and now he's trying to put one there. Let's see. So, and again, these zoning laws were put into place just for this reason, so they can't put a house every little piece of land. The other side of my house, years before the zoning laws got changed, they put a duplex in there sideways because the guy that owned the house before me sold the land, sold the house and left. He didn't care what happened to anybody either. So we have all these signatures here and if you want them?
Yeah, I'll take them, sir. Yeah. Thank, thank you, sir.
My name's Scott Entwassal. I'm at 317 Cumberland Road. I'm right across the street. And I just kind of want to reiterate, either the applicant has the world's worst graphic design or he's being deceptive here because that lot is very steep. And on top of that, it's full of ledge, so I'm also wondering how deep this foundation can go without drilling, blasting, so I'm not sure if he's made provisions for that. But there's ledge sticking out. They just did the gas main down the road. My house was shaking as they were digging the trench from the ledge. So the lot is just totally unfit for construction. I've been there 38 years and we've seen the parking get exponentially worse every year. And for, you know, four parking spots is good, but, you know, people have, you know, visitors and parties and it's right on the corner and, you know, my kids fortunately don't live there anymore, but they've, many times have almost got hit coming around that corner. And I understand that, you know, there's, they're going to be off-street parking, but there's going to be, even though they have four spots, they're taking away two spots or more on the street where people can parallel park there. So you've got 26, I believe, you know, not only taxpayers, but voters, and they're very, you know, it's a very passionate thing in our neighborhood. This has been brought up before and, you know, we've been here before and we'll be here again. And I suggest that even before you act on this, you go out to the site and you see what that lot really looks like, not what they're presenting here. This is false. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, councillor.
Good evening. Corey Robinson. I went, when I was notified of this project, I went and spoke to some of the neighbors, the abutters, and I took a look at the project. Decent-sized parcel. It's very sloped. I read the comments. Some of the comments refer for the board to take a look at the stormwater comments. That hasn't been discussed yet. And, I mean, basically, we're looking for a variance on the garage, four feet we're losing. It's a sizable property and what's currently draining with ledge in the ground now, we're putting all impervious surface between driveway, roof. Where's that water going to be mitigated? Some of the concerns I have are the basins can't keep up over in that area. Are we putting more surface water running to public way? Obstruction of groundwater by the proposed foundation could surcharge the abutters property. How's that going to be mitigated? It's one concern I have, especially with ledge in the ground because the water's just going to channel once it's interrupted. We're dealing with something similar over at another location in the same district where a property was retaining what was done up above and now it just channels water through and the poor business has a sheet of ice for a driveway that channels out to Bridge Street now as a result. It's also recommended a six-inch curb cut that will be reset along Orleans. If you look at that intersection, once they put a six-inch curb cut back in, it's going to channel surface water right across that intersection where it meets Cumberland. The house to the right, I think they're going to end up seeing a lot of surface water come down because there's no basin again over in that area. Also, increasing impervious surface, as I mentioned, how are we going to mitigate that to push it away because that slope from Orleans, it looks like it's crowned. It got to be at least a 10-foot-plus drop to the furthest point of this property we're talking about. And the abutter at that point has already had issues with groundwater as a result due to the ledge in that area, so I think there's some concerns that need to be addressed as part of this planning process. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
My name is David Nicolow. I live at 119 Orleans Street, just the opposite corner where this home is being proposed to be built. I have to say, that was a nice portrait, but I don't think that's very accurate. It looks like there's going to be a lot more room around that home. I'll tell you, I have a, I've been a realtor now for over 23 years. I have an active general contractor's license. I've had new construction subdivisions and rehab properties with builders. I can tell you by putting a home on that lot, you will basically be stuffing a property onto that small hood. I have neighbors here tonight that don't have the luxury of having driveways, so they park out in the street anyways. Both sides of Orleans Street, up in this corner where we live, there were cars parked all day, all night. Same thing on Cumberland Road. You put a house there, where are these people going to park? How far down the road do they have to go to park their vehicle to bring groceries in and bring their children home? This is not a good spot to be building a single-family home and my vote is no.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Barbara Drolet and I live at 89 Orleans Street. I want to know who's going to be responsible when they start blasting all of that ledge out? It's full of it. And I know my house is built on ledge. The walls are going to crack, your foundation's going to leak. Who's going to be held responsible? Are you just going to build it and walk away? And that corner, if you're coming up Orleans and you take your right in the winter, you slide right into there. It's like a big hazard. And the cars going up and down that street are going 50, 60 miles an hour. I feel like I'm on a speedway now. I've been living there 40 years and it's getting worse and worse. I vote no. Thanks.
Okay, thank, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition's petition? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, scene on that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Charles Latulip. I live at 14 Lupine Road. My land does not abut the said property or that. Looking at the plans and stuff like that, I think it would fit into the neighborhood. When it comes to parking and that, there is, there's at least four parking spots off the street. I'm not questioning anything these people are saying. They live there. I've been living there for 15 years at the border of Orleans. There are a lot of cars on the road, whether it's there, all the way up, all the way down. That's all I can say. At least they're offering off-street parking. It's a good-looking house. It would fit. If you go in that neighborhood, which I would hope that yous do, there's, you know, going to be construction there. You should go and look at it. But, that neighborhood has all different sized houses. It's not a cookie cutter neighborhood. There's all different stuff there and I feel that house would fit in. They have concerns, rightfully so, but I'm only looking at it from my standpoint, for the neighborhood. But I, I would say it looks good. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I'd just like to reiterate.
Sir, sir, that, that portion is closed, so just, we're doing just, so you, you had to turn, so. Yep. Anyone wishing, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Yeah, good evening, sir.
Yeah, Keith Poria. I live at 60 Essex Street. I've been there over 22 years. I'm in favor of the project because it brings new construction to the area. The city is in need of housing. I think it provides that. It does provide the four parking spots. I do understand the other concerns. But you're bringing people back into the neighborhood, investing in the community and stuff. I think that's what we need. I'm in favor.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name's Corey Broad, 80 Fisher Street. I'm in favor of the, building the home there. I think hopefully it'll bring up value of other homes there and then the extra property tax as well for revenue. Been in law my entire life. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor, in favor. All right, scene on the public hearings closed. We're going to open, before we open, we'll question the comments for the board. Councillor, did you want to say anything before we open up comments questions board?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, the overriding concern I heard was parking. Again, we are providing a two-car under, two-car garage under with two parking spaces inside. We're providing two parking spaces outside. As I said, there's over 100 feet of frontage along Orleans Street and there's 75 feet of frontage along Cumberland. Sure, we're taking up 15 feet of frontage for the curb cut, but we're providing four off-street parking spaces. So, all things being equal, we, we are not exasperating the parking situation in the neighborhood. It's as simple as that. That's all.
Okay, thank you, councillor. All right, we're going to open up questions and comments to the board. The chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask about your document that you provided that shows the undersized lots in the neighborhood.
Yes.
Adjacent to this property, there's three undersized lots adjacent to the property. Across the street from the property, on Orleans, Orleans Street, there's adjacent to this property, four undersized lots. I mean, you can't get much closer than that. The lots adjacent to the property are undersized. One would think that this is a larger lot than those adjacent to it. At, at a relief looking for about 600 square fea-
792.
792 square feet of relief, okay. I, I, I know what grades are. And so I'm looking at this rendering here and I see a steep site on Orleans Street. Is there any reason for us not to believe that that's completely accurate?
There's no reason to believe that that's not completely accurate. It's a very good representation of the, of the house, how it fits on the slope.
The only piece that I would say-
Okay, folks, please, is, we-
As an architect who has been at the site and has studied this site and recognized what the grades are, I agree that this is completely accurate with the exception of the yellow house. The yellow house is shown as head-on to Orleans Street. It, it's, it's, it's got an angle to it. And so it would show that it actually cuts back at an angle. So that's the only fault that I have with this rendering is that the yellow house is not depicted as it would be if you were looking at it from the street when this house was built.
Fair enough.
If it were built, okay. But I, I completely believe the grades. I have questions about drainage. And I don't know who to direct that to. If Matt might want to handle those? So do we know anything about the subsurface material? How much ledge is there? What the quality of the ledge is? Is it shale? Is it something that'll be easily broken up? Or how much of a vibration is going to be encountered by the adjacent properties when the ledge is accounted? Do we have any understanding of that?
Oh, we have, what we do know, we do know there's a, there's a ledge outcropping here, okay? I was taking a look at the grades in relation to the question about getting the foundation put in here. And actually, the way that this foundation's fitting into the site as a drive under, there's minimal amount of excavation that would be needed in order to get the foundation in. So when I say minimal, it's approximately six feet over here, working its way here to where it would be four feet at the grade here. Five feet possibly to the bottom of the footing here. So it's not a tremendous amount of excavation that has to be taken out if there is ledge here. We all know that if there is, if there is ledge encountered, it has to go through the building department. There has to be surveys done related to that ledge activity prior to the ledge being excavated out of there. And just like all the other homes that have been put into this neighborhood, this would be put in, in the same manner if there was ledge encountered. I don't see this being a, a big problem just because we know that the, on average, it's going to be approximately six feet.
Okay, and you located the property, asking for four feet of relief for the parking to help mitigate the ledge issue? I mean, why did-
No, that wasn't the reason. The reason is, is that you have to stagger the, the garage back from the, from the residence when you have a, you know, a, a house with a garage next to it. And when you have a, a garage under, it's all one structure. So that's why you could, you could try to cantilever over the story above to set the garage back a little bit. And that's the reason why the variance is being requested because it's difficult to stagger the garage from the main living house when it's all one structure.
But you would also be pushing the house-
You would be pushing it back if you needed to.
More into the ledge too, which would compromise the site work even more.
Yeah, I'd also like to know, when you look at this plan, that what's nice about this plan is you see the amount of green grass and vegetation that's going to comprise of this lot when it's completed. And it does have a lot of open space on this property.
Okay. The, the parking area slopes to one side, to the, to the east side.
Correct.
So the water from that paved surface doesn't enter Cumberland. It really goes-
Right, so we proposed a drainage system on the site. So there was going to be an interceptor drain here to take runoff coming off of here, okay? And there's an infiltration system here. So we, we still intend to put in that drainage system, which is recommended by the stormwater team, did not put it in. Ironically enough by the co- But we want to put that in.
I think if we were to go forward with this tonight, I, I would like to recommend a condition that you work with DPD-
Yes.
-to resolve the appropriate drainage system on the site. And strongly recommend subsurface, in, on my opinion. But I think DPD or, or Stormwater should weigh in on that. But to councillor Robinson's message about the pavement potentially creating a, a condition where the water would go on to Cumberland, do you see anything here on this site with the pavement for producing any off-site additional?
We don't.
Right.
And we've done the calculations.
Right.
The, the pavement is actually sheeting off this, to this side.
Right, so there's no additional off-site drainage?
Correct, there's a reduction.
In fact, okay, and there's a reduction.
Yes.
Right, right. Okay. The building has a, a north-south orientation, so you could have a beautiful solar array on the south side. Or the southeast side, which is tremendous. I think you'd probably get-
On this half, yes.
25 and it wouldn't be, it would be, okay. All right. Parking, I think the councillor mentioned that we have a 15-foot curb cut, which is allowed by zoning.
Correct.
And a parking space typically on-street would be 20 feet.
Correct, 22.
Or 22. So it's not even a full parking space that we're taking up with the curb cut.
Correct.
Okay.
I'd also like to know with the location, which we also had thought out, is that it's set back enough from the intersection as well?
Okay. Oh, I agree. I think that the location, so you're satisfying all of the setback requirements? Except for the parking?
And the garage.
That's the only one that you're looking for?
Yes.
And that's largely because of the design that you've chosen where the garage is hidden under the building, in the, in the basement?
Correct, and that design is appropriate for a lot that's grading essentially 10 feet across the lot. You tend to steer towards a drive-under garage because it requires minimal land disturbance to put that structure in.
Right, and we're providing parking double of what zoning requires on this site?
Correct. We could even provide more if we wanted to, but there's no-
But gone to double with this design of what zoning requires?
Yeah, you could actually create a couple spaces here, but there's just no need.
I'd rather see it green. I'd rather see it green by far. No question about it. Especially with the drainage systems on this site to satisfy anything that would require drainage structures in, in more than what we are providing. So I would just have that one condition if this were to go forward. And I'm thankful for the shade trees, as always. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And I also like to note that this plan has been fully surveyed. So there's no approximations on anything related to this plan related to grades.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chairman, Mrs. Kalan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through, Mr. Chairman. In all fairness, councillor, I'm going to let Mr. Entwistle, he got up at one point, let Mr. Entwistle-
Of course.
-speak whatever, what he was going to, what he was trying to get across.
Thank, thank you very much. A couple, a couple of points. You know, you talk about they're giving three and taking some curbside parking, but you're also creating, there's people living there. And people come and visit people. So we might be giving, you know, getting a couple extra spots, but there's going to be much more traffic there. Especially a three-bedroom house is going to be a family. Family's going to have kids. The kids are going to have visitors. The kids are going to have parties. And then as far as, someone else made a statement about undersized lots. Those houses were built 50, 60, 70 years ago. Not, not today. Today, you're deciding on this house in this timeframe with the traffic and the cars. Every car, back then, there was what, one car per family maybe? Now you're talking three, four cars per family. So I, the, the, the existing undersized lots are irrelevant to this, to this question. And I, and I would, all due respect, I would implore you to go out and look at that lot. And if you think that that's representative of how that lot elevation is, then I'll go out there with you and I'll, and I'll agree with you. But I will meet you out there anytime you want. And you tell me that that is representative of the slope of that lot, and I'll eat my hat. Have you been there?
Yes.
You've seen that lot and you think that that's representative? My kids used to slide in the winter down that, down that. You're not, it's, it's a hill. So that is not representative. And he can say what he wants to, but that is not representative of the slope of that lot. And that, and there is a tremendous amount of ledge there. And he even contradicted himself. He said, okay, because of the way the, the slope is, the, the, the foundation doesn't have to go that deep because it's going to fall the slope of the, he said it himself. That's going to, with the two-car garage is going to be ground level because of the, because the other one, the other part of the foundation is going to be up on the hill. Right? Am I right?
Mr. Kalan.
I'm just allowing you to articulate your speakers, Mr. Entwistle.
Alls I'm asking for is, do not make a decision without, we have, last time, we actually had to have a meeting out there. The board was gracious enough to meet the, the neighborhood out there. And to look at the parking, look at the traffic, and look at the lot. And that's all we're asking for. Don't make a decision tonight based on this, whatever he's got here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I just, I just want to make, get everybody on board so we're all, everybody's got their chance to, to speak, so. I've, I've reviewed the face and, and I did go over, I went by the property earlier today. The topography of it is, yeah, it is, is heavy. But I think this project, they're doing, they're, they're taking that into account. And I have to look at this, based on the variance criteria, we have to find whether it's special hardship owing to the circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, topography of the land and the structures available. Public, whether allowing the variances for the public, would be for the public good. And if the intent of zoning is satisfied. Those are the three criterias that we have to meet on these. And looking at it, I think intent, I think the hardship is absolutely clear. I mean, it's a piece of property, it's been vacant for decades, underutilized. It's got, it, the topography is clearly an issue. The, the lot itself is unique. And, and as you pointed out, councillor, and I looked at it, no, DPD looked at it as well, about the lots in the surrounding areas. And 99 Orleans, 4,000 square feet. You're seeking, your lot is 6,200 and change, needing, and you need 7,000, so that's 792, 792 needed. 99 Orleans, 4,000 square feet. 318 Cumberland, 5,700 square feet. 89 Orleans, 7912, a little over, it made it. But then you've got, on the other side of Orleans, right across the street from this piece of property, all two families, 3750, 4,400, 5,000, 4,900. Lots, the, I mean, and you're only seeking relief, you're seeking relief for 792 feet. And these are all lots that are well undersized. I understand that they were built a long time ago. But the purpose of us being here is for, you to ask for relief from the zoning code. That's what, that's what we're here for. That's why the board exists. And in order to do so, we have to meet these criteria for the variance. Special hardship. Clearly you have that. Clearly. Public good. Adding another single-family home in a neighborhood that are on a vacant, underutilized lot, that'll be added to the tax rolls, provided increase in the housing stock for, where we continually say that we're in desperate need of more housing. So the public good, I think, is there. And intent of zoning? I mean, I, again, I appreciate all the neighbors' concerns. A lot of it's about parking. And parking clearly seems to be satisfied when you have four spots off-street there. And I understand all the other issues, traffic. And even snow, snow storage and all that. But the relief here is minimal, in my opinion. DPD agrees with that, seems to agree with that. They still, they believe that they didn't have, they believe that the request of relief is minimal, and they had no concerns. I understand that stormwater, minor issue, but if counsel's willing to, willing to work with DPD to alleviate that, or the petitioner, excuse me. So, again, I understand the little concerns for the neighbors, but this seems like a decent project that's going to fit in with the neighborhood. I understand there's going to be some concerns about construction, but once it's all said and done, once it's over with, you're going to have a very nice, beautiful house there with the family or whoever's living there, and I think it, I think it will fit in well with the neighborhood. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair organizes, Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I think the neighbors have legitimate concerns. I think the concerns are more with the neighborhood than this project, though. We're talking about speeding and bad intersections. Well, that's going to be here no matter what, whether this house is here or not. Parking, they're worried about getting parking spaces taken away, but they're getting taken away from people that aren't parking on their own property now. This property needs four feet of relief because of a driving garage. Now, if you took away that garage, left the house as it is, and just kept it as a driveway, you wouldn't be here for relief because you only need 18 feet. So we wouldn't even be here for that variance if you didn't make a garage. So by adding more parking to this project, you had to come for a variance. Where if you take away two spots under the house, you wouldn't be here for it. We wouldn't even be addressing it because it was a driveway, not a garage. So I'm not going to punish you for taking two spots off the street and putting them under the house. I think it's foolish. You're doing a good thing, so that four feet is nothing. So really, what we're here looking at is 792 square feet. Is putting another house in the city worth 792 feet? Yeah, it is. I get that the parking is an issue. If there was no parking here, yeah, I would probably say this is not a good project. You have no parking, you're going to add four or five cars out into the street. Well, you're not doing that. You're putting parking here. And yes, you might have visitors over that go out onto the street, but everybody in this neighborhood's going to have visitors over that puts parking on the street. Nobody's saying this neighborhood can't have visitors or parties at their house, they're just saying that this house, it would be a problem. So I don't find the parking to be an issue with this project because this is adding four parking spots for this one house, when they only need two. So they're going above and beyond. The 792 feet is not a big ask. If you had the 792 feet, you wouldn't be here for anything. So is it worth not building a new, single-family house that's in line with the same-sized houses in this neighborhood? It's bigger than most of the lots in this neighborhood. No, I don't think 792 feet is worth turning that down. So I'm in favor of this, and, but I'll listen to the rest of the board. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair organizes, Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have one question as far as, what is the square footage of the new home going to be?
About 1,700 square feet.
1,700? I mean, I agree with my colleagues as far as this stuff. I mean, if you were to ask, I mean, I live in the neighborhood myself, and if, on that chart, I would be one of those homes that have a dot on it as under square footage. I don't know how many people out here would also have, or have one on their home that are present, though. I also live on a corner lot. I mean, I have 4,400 square feet for my lot, you know? I have a 1,400-square-foot home. And I live on ledge, there's also to the side of me, four yards that are empty that could be buildable. Did I buy my home thinking that that was never going to be built? No, because it's possible, you know? I agree with everybody on the board here as far as, you know, for the 700-square-foot variance, yeah, I mean, I mean, I live on ledge and all that stuff, too, so it's, I mean, I'm in favor as well, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. The chair organizes, Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would say that I like the rendition that was presented. And I do agree with members here that it would be a good addition to the neighborhood. But my first concern was, and is, is the fact that the Stormwater team did not think that their system is required. And I think that they should be involved. And Counselor Robinson mentioned that there may not be enough catch basins there, so I don't know what that house is going to look like when it's completed and where the water is going to, good. I know that, you mentioned that there'll be a draining system. So when water comes down the hill, where would it go?
Just to clarify, we were talking about catch basins in the roadway. Obviously, this is outside of the property and along here, so those areas we will not be affecting at all. The drainage on the property has been proposed in size with calculations to be located in this area. And the driveway has been pitched such that the drainage coming off of the driveway will be going on to this portion of the property here. There's also an infiltration trench here to pick up drainage coming in off this hill here. So we fully intended to implement all of this drainage, and with many projects, when and if they're approved, we still need to go through a process through the Stormwater team, with them, to do additional drainage, if necessary at that time.
Is that, it's not a fringe drain, right? An outdoor fringe drain?
No, it's not.
No? Okay.
It's a surface drain here, okay, just to pick the water up from here and get it into the ground, and then this is sheet flowing off of the side. And then we're taking the roof runoff and putting it in infiltration systems.
That would be my major concern, the fact that if waters, since it's such a slope, that if water's running down, where would it go, and would it impact any of the neighbors downstream? So, yeah, I just think that the Stormwater team should be doing a better assessment, or a more involved assessment with you.
Yeah. So I also like to note that we do, we have incorporated grading here for water that's currently going off the property here. We have graded this so the drainage is heading in this direction.
Okay, so it'll go in front of the property?
I'm just saying it will not go, be going on to the abutters property as it does today.
Okay, I thank you. I'll pass it on to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair organizes, Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first comment is not a defensive one. I offer it as, on an informational basis, to all the concerned neighbors who came out. I will take the liberty of speaking on behalf of my colleagues as well as myself. In no way, in no way do we ever render judgment on a petition by simply looking at a graphic that was provided in these chambers. We are obligated, obligated, to visit the site of each petition, and I can assure you that in each and every occasion, we do so. So my judgment is based on information that I received from our dedicated staff, who are the experts in this matter. Also, a review of zoning bylaws and a physical visit to the site. I just wanted to get that out there. My next comment is, obviously, when this number of neighbors attends a meeting as such, you feel very passionate about it. So you absolutely have concerns. But when you're sitting here, ready to render judgment, we have to weigh those concerns. And do those concerns outweigh the benefit or the allowance of such a petition? Now, again, I offer this in a respectful manner. The concerns that you've expressed tonight, there's nothing that a denial of this petition would remedy. The issues about parking, the issues about parties, the issues about snow, the issue about, none of that could be alleviated with a denial of this petition. The construction of this home in no way derogates from the character of this neighborhood. The integrity of the neighborhood remains intact, and in my estimation, is enhanced by the construction of this new home. I have consistently voted on what is called undersized lots. Throughout the city, in all neighborhoods, I've consistently voted in favor of new construction on these undersized lots. And having said that, this lot is so insignificantly undersized, there's really no basis that I could oppose this. The benefits do outweigh the concerns expressed, and I'll be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. I think, I just want to start by saying thank you for the people who came out tonight. We do appreciate the feedback, whether you're for or against, and we, like my colleague said, we do weigh all the options and information people give us tonight, but also, we get a lot of documentation, paperwork, comments from the different departments. You know, I do understand that the concerns people have here, and again, it's valid concerns for the neighbors. It just doesn't affect the criteria of the actual petition, what they're here for. In my opinion, again, this is, you know, I'm just speaking for myself, I think you meet pretty much all the requirements of a variance. And it doesn't, it doesn't negatively derogate from the intent of zoning. I think that's the purpose here, is not to like, to devalue the neighborhood, the property, if only, like my colleague just said, enhance the neighborhood. So with that being said, I'm going to vote in favor. And then, Counselor, we talked about the condition, about working with DPD around drainage on the site. Are you, is that all right?
Yes, we're happy to work with the city's Stormwater team to implement the recharge system.
Okay. Mr. McCarthy, do you have further comments, sir?
Not knowing exactly why the Stormwater team is looking not to do this, I would just state maybe the condition to work with the Stormwater engineer to provide appropriate Stormwater management system that could include subsurface infiltration system, only because we don't know why they're looking to not do it. I think we should give them some grace here and just say could include versus must include. Okay? That would be my-
Okay.
And that's fine.
That's okay. All right. Any other comments from my colleagues? All right, see?
If I could, I just want to clarify the slope here. It is a strong slope. Orleans, is it Orleans Street? Is it? If I could just ask the engineer here, Matt Hammer, is it about 10% or 12% slope on that street? I'm looking at the grades here, and I'm calculating it's probably 12%. That is a strong slope. No one's denying that it's not a strong slope. I've been to the site, I know what 12% looks like, I know what it should be depicted like. So I just want everyone to know that we are aware of how steep Orleans is, and we just want to make sure that everyone recognizes that the material presented tonight is accurate. The material is not smoke and mirrors, trying to take a design here that's not accurate and presented. It is, in my opinion, showing what really does exist on the site, and I think we should recognize the quality of the team here that we have presenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
No, do you know? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
It's only 7%?
Right there.
No, no, I'm talking about the steep one on the side here. Orleans. I think that that is-
Actually, less than.
It's not even?
Yeah.
Okay.
So-
Okay.
You know, sometimes when we're doing elevations, we have to be careful of the accuracy that, you know, someone tried, an architect tried, the best they could-
Oh.
-to show the grade here. And when I actually look at this plan, it actually shows the grade, okay? Normally, when we, when we look at these plans, and you can stop me whenever you want, we're showing these, elevations, right? And we rely on the site plan for the grades. But actually, in their elevations, they were taking my site plan and putting the grades on, on the plan. So it's additional information, is what I'm trying to say, in that these-
Sir, can you please?
And that these renderings should be just not taking, taking that they're just additional information to give us perspective of what's generally happening here.
But as we know, it's based on a photograph of the lot.
That's right.
So we're actually looking at the real lot.
That's actually true. And you can actually see that here.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Any other comments before we move forward with a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Prokop, go ahead, sir.
Can I just have a quick question? I was looking at one of the comments from the engineering comments, where it says here that a handicap, I'm sorry, reveals sidewalk contains Orleans construction. So to construct a concrete wheelchair ramp at the intersection?
Yeah, can you address that comment from DPD?
Yeah.
Yes, so there's going to be an improvement made here.
Is that a requirement from DPD?
That is, yeah.
It's part of the engineering comments?
Yes.
Yep.
Right.
So all of those comments will be incorporated into a decision.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prokop. Any other comments from my colleagues?
Maybe I can just-
Mr. McCarthy, go ahead.
Maybe I can just add that as a condition, that we incorporate the one, two, three, seven comments from the engineering department.
That's acceptable as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Any other comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing that, Kevin, motion, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, likes to make a motion for ZBA 2025-9 for variance at 326 Cumberland Road. Variance requires relief from minimum lot area and minimum lot area per dwelling unit, as well as minimum garage setback, with the two conditions that the applicant worked with Stormwater engineer to provide appropriate Stormwater management system that could include subsurface drain infiltration system, and that we incorporate the seven engineering comments.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve with conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nixon.
Approve with conditions.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, and have a good night. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have ZBA-2025-10. The petition is a variance. The applicant is Bradley Hinckley, property located at 199 Mammoth Road. The applicant zoning bylaw is section 5.1. The petition is, the law's only going to appeals, will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by the applicant to convert the existing single-family home at 199 Mammoth Road to a two-family home. The subject property is located in traditional two-family TTF zoning district. Project requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimum usage open space per dwelling unit requirements, and any other leave card and loan zoning ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, do you say 199?
Yes, yes. Yep. Yep. Good evening. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't hear you first. I'm sorry. Hushmand Afshar from Taj Engineering here in Lowell, and I am here to represent the applicant, Mr. Hinckley, who apologized for not being here. As I understand, he's out of town for, on a business trip. The existing house is located in Zone TTF, and it's a...it's an existing house and a lot which was created decades ago, and the house was built decades ago. So this is the footprint of the house, and in the back, this is the footprint of the All the applicant is applying to do, requesting to do, is convert the two-story house in two units. Unit one will be the first floor. And of course, each unit has its own independent two egresses, and...and unit two will be the second floor and the attic. There's not too much alteration being proposed on the floor layout of the unit one on first floor, just remove a couple of walls, partitions, they're not even partitions, and create a living room, bedroom, bath. This is the main entrance, the foyer, and kitchen area. The basement is for general use for all the units. And the second unit will be the existing second floor. We want bedroom. This is an older plan. The attic will be just a big open space which will be used for a living room or a family room or game room for whatever use the family decides to do so. The garage is a single-floor, two-car garage, and the applicant is proposing to build an ADU unit which is less than 900 square foot above the existing garage, and it has its own means of access and egress. So what we are requesting the relief, again, as you can see, no new foundation, no new footprint being added. All the proposed alterations and changes are being proposed on what we have existing footprint. We have two existing garages, two existing, parking in the two-car garage which we have in the back of the building. We are proposing two more parking spaces in front of the garage on the beat apron that we have. In addition to that, we are also proposing two more parkings, even though we don't need to, but we are providing, just make sure in case there is any visitor and there is need for additional parking, we are proposing two additional parking spaces with a proposed driveway from Mammoth Road. As you can see, the lot is a corner lot at the intersection of Ross and Mammoth. The owner, the applicant, actually has permit for a street parking in front of his property, but he decided not to extend that, instead use honest street parking and hopefully help with the parking situation in the general neighborhood. In terms of architecture, the existing, there will be a flow in the overall look, architectural look of the building. Right now, you have the front building, and then you have a drop, and then a one-story garage with a gable roof on it, but based on this proposal, you will have a nice continuous gable from front to the back of the building. So considering that we are in TTF, traditional two-family, and we are requesting two units because the ADU is allowed by the state, as you know, the new laws which is being...we are all getting more education on it these days. So the request for the relief is really for the two units, which require 6,000 square foot, but we have 3,593. And the only other item that we have requesting for is the minimum undisturbed open space, which is required 1,000 for two units, and since the lot is a small lot and it has been there, created many years ago, we don't have that. There were some comments from various departments, which we complied with and created, one of the floors had two bedrooms, we created, we changed that into one bedroom. And basically, all the other comments, that I don't want to take up your time and go through them one by one, from building department, we addressed all those comments. We will definitely comply with the engineering department comments in terms of application for the street opening, for the curb cut opening, a street opening for the new driveway, and so on and so forth. There were no other comments that we received from any other department. So far, from the Stormwater Management Group, we haven't received any comments, but if they said that this amount of impervious area as a result of the new driveway, we are adding needs underground infiltration system, we will be more than happy to address that, too. Because as I said, except this new driveway, we are not adding any other new impervious area to the site. There was a comment about the trees, as if I remember correctly, in this corner, intersection of the two roads, which as long as it doesn't interfere with any sight distance or line of sight in terms of traffic, we will check into that. We will be happy, more than happy to address that, too. And with that, I'll try my best to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Now, we're going to open a hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to petition? An opposition, an opposition, an opposition, seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of petition? In favor, in favor, in favor, seeing none, and the public hearings closed. We're going to open, question the comments from the board. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Kelly on the floor, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. So Dylan, try to help me here. This is an existing single-family, right? Correct?
Correct.
And they can put in an ADU by right if it's an existing single-family, but if they turn it into a two-family, doesn't that go away?
Accessory dwelling units can be added to any property in a zone that is, allows single families either by right or by special permits, when ADU could be added to a two-family.
Okay, so if it's an existing single-family, and we're in a TTF zone, which allows single families, so if we convert it to a two-family, they still have a right to the ADU?
That is correct, yep.
Because it's existing right now?
Because it's in a zone that allows single families, they're allowed to add an ADU even if it had two units.
But essentially, any zone allows single families, pretty much.
Essentially, yes.
So...
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, because quite frankly, I'm really puzzled by what's being proposed in the layout. The first floor, you have two bedrooms, a bath, two bedrooms, two baths, a kitchen, and no living area other than what's been designated a foyer. So I'm not sure what's going on there. I mean, yeah, if you want to...why is there no living area, like, no living space? It's two bedrooms, a foyer, and two baths. What do you need two bathrooms for?
Oh, I think the...I'm sorry, I did not send the revised copy of the plan. My apologies.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting confused, because...
It just happened this morning.
Okay, I don't think the plans you, the plans you just presented to us are not what we have. I don't think that...because you mentioned something about the attic being a wide-open space.
Correct.
And we have it as a living room, a bathroom, and a bonus room, and a mechanical room.
I emailed those plans tonight.
Okay. We don't have those in front of us. Do you have a copy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We can have these. And busy Monday. We changed this on Friday. I was supposed to email them to DPD this morning. I did not. We did not. Blame it on my helpers. But anyway, I will give you this copy, and I will email tonight. This is what it's planned.
No, sir, I'm not going to, I'm not going to deal with that. No, please. I'm not going to deal with the presentation at this point. If you haven't, if you didn't provide us the new plans for tonight, then I don't want to waste anybody's time. I'm going to suggest we just continue this. Provide us with the new plans so we can go over this more thoroughly, because what I have in front of us is, even what I have in front of us right now, I wouldn't even come close to thinking about approving, based on what the layout is, and especially with the concerns of the comments with the building commissioner. Quite frankly, I think we probably should continue it based on the comments of the building commissioner, who really says, "I would be hesitant to grant this variance without site inspection prior." I really, even just that alone, I'd probably be suggesting continuing this and allow the building inspector to weigh in and go over what you're proposing, but I'm not even going to waste any time on this. I would suggest we continue this, but I'll listen to my other fellow board members to see what their comments are, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brier.
Oh, Ms. Brier, yes.
I'll yield to Mr. Brier.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kelly. Yes, Ms. Brier, the floor is...
My apologies. Can we move to a continuance at this point?
Yeah, so does, if everyone's okay with move to a continuance?
Second.
To get all the documentation and have the building department inspector inspect the site? Is that sufficient, everybody? Okay.
And maybe if I could just add, if we could just have a document that responds to the comments, you mentioned that you have all the comments addressed, but I don't see that, and so if you could address the comments, especially as well as the building department, that'd be great. Thank you.
I meant on the plans, on the revised plans, they were, they are addressed, but that's fine.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Rickert, when's our next available opening on the agenda in terms of open availability slots?
Sure, a second. The next availability is April 14th.
April 14th? All right. Is that date okay for you? You need more timeouts, sir?
No, that's fine.
April 14th, good?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from my colleagues before we have a motion to continue? All right, seen none, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman would like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-10 for variance at 199 Mammoth Road to be continued to April 14th, 2025.
Second.
All right, motion, Mr. McCarthy, second, Ms. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve continuance.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance to April 14th, 2025.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to April 14th, 2025.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve continuance, April 14th, 2025.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
All right, the matter's been continued. Sir, just work with DPD, okay, with all the documentation, address the comments, and we see you April 14th, okay?
Sure.
And may want to reach out to the building commissioner as well.
Yep.
Is he back from vacation? He's back?
Yes, he's back.
Okay. Will do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, just for the public notice, there'll be no other notice this matter, about this matter, that it's a public notice. All right, moving on to the next business on the agenda, we have ZBA-2025-11. The petition is a variance. The applicant is Paula Mason, property located at 1470 Varnum Ave. The applicant's zoning ballot is Section 5.1. The petition is the Low Zoning Order of Appeals will hold a public hearing to heal all interested persons relative to an application by Paula Mason to subdivide an existing 20,000 square-foot lot and create a new conforming lot for a future single-family home at 1470 Varnum Ave. The proposal requires a variance per Section 5.1 for relief from the floor area ratio of FAR requirements for the existing lot and for any relief required in the low zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. Attorney Joe Clamont, 490 Textile Ave in Drakett, appearing for Paula Mason and her family. The family members are here as well. We're here regarding the property at 1470 Varnum Ave, which is a corner lot and also borders Dowling Drive. The family has owned it for a little over 40 years. The lot is 20,000, 17 square feet, and is in the SSF zone. The existing house, as you look at the plan, is completely on the right side of the property. The family is looking to split the lot. There would be 10,000, 008 square feet for the current residence, and a new lot of 10,000, 010 square feet for a new building lot for a single-family home. No variances would be needed for the new lot, but the remaining lot, once the lot is split, would require variances. One, a front yard variance, because the existing garage, which is pre-existing non-conforming, is 10.1 feet, 130 feet would be required, and the floor area ratio would then be 0.503 when 0.35 is required. So those two variances on the remaining property would be required. There'd be no changes to the existing home. If you look at the plan, you see the lot does split nicely into two 10,000 square-foot lots. The applicant believes the desired relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or derogating from the intent of zoning. 10,000 square-foot additional lot would be consistent with the neighborhood and add some badly needed housing. Apparently, no concerns from any city department on this project. The lot is being sold by the family to provide funds for their mother's care. Their mother had to be moved into assisted living. Their mother had to be moved into assisted living in Lowell and they need funds to provide for her care, so they're looking to split the lot, sell the lot, and they wouldn't be building it themselves, it'd be a builder that would come in and do that. We respectfully pray the variance be granted.
Okay, uh, thank you, counselor. Now, we'll open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition's petition? In opposition, in opposition, seeing none, that portion of public hearings close. Anyone wishing to speak in favor's petition? In favor, in favor, in favor, seeing none, the public hearings close. We're gonna open questions and comments from the board now. The chair organizes, um, Mr. Hubby, Ms. Hubby, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, um, yeah, no, I mean, I mean, there's plenty of room there. I know you said that you need 30 feet on the garage, but that's because it's frontage on two streets?
Correct.
Right? So you're ten, you're 10 feet off the side yard, I mean, looking at it, side yard and you'd have 34 feet, right?
Yes, yep.
From Lakeview, so, uh, I, this is, uh, there's no question on this one.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hubby. Uh, the chair organizes, Mr. Nickerson, Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I agree, I have no questions, I think this is pretty straightforward, it's pretty simple, so, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. Uh, the chair organizes, Mr. Prokop, Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, and there is very minimum impact on this, um, and I'll be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Prokop. Chair organizes, Mr. Brier, Ms. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Brier. Uh, the chair organizes, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow colleagues, this is very straightforward and very clean. I've never seen, uh, comments from DPD that have been so minimal, um, for an application, so congratulations, I think you win the prize here. And, you know, the, the major variances and existing variance, um, the FAR is really the only piece here, and you satisfy all the setbacks, so, um, I'm in favor, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Uh, the chair organizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, ditto.
All right, thank, thank you, Ms. Callahan. Same as my colleagues, I think it's pretty straightforward, um, you know, so, wish you best of luck, best of luck with your mother's care, so. If there's no further comments, give a motion to approve, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-11 for variance at 1470 Varnum Ave. Variance, uh, per section 5.1 for relief of floor area ratio FAR requirements for existing lot as well as, uh, side yard setback for the garage.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Prokop, um, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier. Member Prokop.
Approve.
Member Hubby.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
All right, you've been approved, wish you best of luck, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Have a good night, thank you. Thank you for staying, I know it took a long time for this, sorry. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. All right, moving on to the other business on our agenda, minutes for approval for March 10th. To my colleagues, are there any edits, revision, comments? Seeing none, give a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a, uh, motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 10th, 2025.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay, the ayes are unanimous, the minutes are approved. Any other comments by my colleagues before we adjourn? Seeing none, give a motion to adjourn, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Prokop, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay, the ayes are unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you, have a good night, folks.